We are back from closed session at...
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve. And we are going to go in recess for our closed session so that we can move forward with our regular meeting. I will call our regular meeting to order at seven, is this by seven twelve?
Yes.
Seven twelve. And this, there we go, this is the, um, an annual organizational meeting.
Here you go.
Thank you. So this is our regular meeting of the Ferndale Schools Board of Education, sorry. Our meeting is being video recorded for broadcast on cable throughout the next month on the rotating schedule and also on our YouTube channel. All meetings in the Ferndale Schools are held in public in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And printed documents discussed in tonight's meeting are available to the public upon request with the exception of any information protected by student or employee privacy rights. Board meeting information is posted at our website at www.ferndalschools.org. If you do not have internet access and need information, please contact the board offices at two four eight five eight six eight six five two by Thursday of the week prior to the meeting. And district staff will do their best to work with you. So with that, can we have a roll call, please?
The board's here, we can cross.
Yes, here.
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 Or Mueller.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
To me.
Here.
President of the class.
I'm here. And if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To comply for the United States of America and in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we need to approve the agenda. I have one agenda addition for an action item under seven point four. It will be adoption of a resolution in opposition to Public Act two six nine. If anyone has an objection to that?
What was the agenda item number?
It'll be seven point four. You should all have a copy of the resolution at your place. Okay, any other additions or modifications to the agenda? Saying none, I'll take that as unanimous consent to adopt the agenda for this evening.
I actually, I mean, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
To move Eagle's Points of Pride and the regular board meeting from eleven and twelve to ten and eleven effectively? So that the resources negotiations come after.
That's a good idea. So Eagle's Points of Pride will come after the consideration of any pulled consent agenda items, followed by the regular meeting, and then we'll have the closed session following that. Thank you. Okay, with those two modifications, any additions, changes? And that will be considered unanimous consent to adopt the agenda as modified. And we get to move forward then to our presentation from Ferndale Middle School, Jason Gillespie.
Thank you, everyone. Before I get into our presentation, which is going to be on the sixth grade instructional model, I would first like to recognize the school board for, I was reminded that this January is School Board Appreciation Month. And I really do want to thank you guys for what you do. You don't get paid for this. And I know it's not just this meeting, it's all the other committees, well, you might get paid, but not, not, not anything that your time is worth. But it's not just this meeting, it's, it's all the other committees and meetings that you have to go to and time away from your family. And that, that, that should be valued and recognized. So I, I really do appreciate that, we appreciate that. And when I was thinking about what we could give you as a token of our appreciation, you know, I was thinking about when I, I walked through classroom teachers, you know, teachers' classrooms, and I see what they have around their desk, what I have in my office. If you walk in my office, I have my kids' art displayed prominently. So I went to our art teacher and I asked her to pull some of the pieces that she was most proud of, and we had them framed. So Elena, if you could help pass out these pieces as a token of our gratitude, on behalf of not just Ferndale Middle School, but all of the, all of the students at Ferndale Public Schools. Some of you may recognize the artists that you're receiving because they are your kids. It, it, it truly is, my, my wife, Dylan Jones, is a name that you guys should write down. He is a very talented artist and it might be worth money one day, I don't know. But, uh, thank you, everyone, for everything you do.
Thank you so very much, this is unexpected and very touching. I can't treasure these, I know.
Nancy, did, did you get fins? Okay, good. All right. So, all right, moving on to my piece. So I'm here to talk about the, and I know that what has consumed us this year, to some degree, is dealing with the transition, with the changes that are going on in this district. And something that we've been working very hard on.
We're so proud of our kids.
Something that, that, that we've been working really hard on is bringing the sixth graders over to the middle school and how we are going to deliver instruction to those sixth graders. So before I get into the actual model, and I do have paper copies, Blake, do, do they have copies of, of this?
They don't have paper copies.
Okay, I have some copies I can pass out. So before I get into the actual model, though, I want to explain a little bit about the process that we used to get here. We had a, a teacher committee. We had two middle school teachers, two fifth and sixth grade teachers from both Coolidge and JFK. We had our middle school counselor there. And then Dina and Tom joined the committee as needed. We also had Beth Grillo and Tom Mays come and provide their curriculum insight in their areas. So we formed a teacher committee. We also had a parent committee. We're, we're still meeting. And I also went and visited all the local middle schools. All the other middle schools have a six, seven, eight building. So I went to both Berkeley Middle Schools, Norup and Anderson, I went to Royal Oak Middle School, Hazel Park Junior High. And I, I spoke with or emailed the principals of the Birmingham Middle Schools, just to kind of get a sense of how they handle sixth graders. So kind of put all that together and threw every idea on the board that we could think of. So all the way from self-contained, where a teacher has, you know, thirty kids all day long, teaches them all the subjects, to a six-period day and everything in between. And this is what we settled on, this kind of a blended model. And really, it was to address some of the concerns that we heard coming out of both parents and teachers. We also looked at the, at the data, we looked at the academic data and WEA grades, that type of thing. And what we wanted to do was to ease the transition as well as provide additional time and support in their core academic areas, while still exposing them to what the middle school has to offer, which is the electives, right? That's kind of like the cool part of being in middle school, is you get to go to your elective classes and you can play on sports and, and things like that. So we tried to kind of blend and, and, and put all those demands together, and this is what we came up with. So you don't see any times at the top, you know, we're, we're going to be working through those this year. And this, you know, this is just kind of where we're at right now. It might look a little different by the time, you know, we, we get to it, but this is, this is pretty much where we're at. We went on the assumption that we're going to have five teachers teaching the, the core classes. So you see T one, T two, five teachers right there. So what, basically, this is a blended model. What we have is, we have, similar to how we deliver instruction in sixth grade currently, where you have a team teaching approach. So you have one teacher who teaches English and Social Studies and another teacher who teaches Math and Science. And those two teachers share students, they, they swap back and forth. So we have that, of course, with an odd number. That approach doesn't work for all five teachers, so we had to have a, a, a self-contained class as well. Then we also wanted to build in the elective opportunities. So you, you see a block of time for the electives. And that block of time will actually ensure common planning time for the sixth grade teachers, which is a, a, a real advantage that, 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 that they will have to collaborate. During that elective time, though, we're going to have an elective rotation, an A-B or even odd rotation, if you want to think about it that way, where each student will be either on A days or B days, will have band, orchestra, or choir, or vocal music. And then on the flip side of that rotation, you would have PE for a semester, art for a quarter, and Spanish for a quarter, to kind of continue the Spanish that they're getting in, in grades three through five. Then obviously, we have lunch, and then we come back. And we, we also saw, based on the data, a need to provide intervention and enrichment, some dedicated time for intervention and enrichment. And again, because we're at the middle school, what's nice is that we have, we have some flexibility, particularly using seventh and eighth grade teachers during that intervention and enrichment time, if we can design the schedule, as well as the opportunities of being in a building with, you know, with, with high school teachers as well. So we can really kind of pool and maximize our resources with intervention and enrichment and get some, you know, the class sizes down where we can, you know, work with smaller groups of students in targeted areas that they need, as well as the enrichment. So you see that intervention and enrichment block after lunch. And then you see the, the areas in yellow are, are what we have potentially identified as Cambridge classes. So we'll have two blocks essentially of, of Cambridge English and Social Studies and one block of Cambridge Math. A difference on the math side, and I know this was very important to Mr. Pruitt, was having a true sixth grade honors math. Right now, our seventh grade honors math is, the, the teacher has to cram two years of math in one year. And that's, that's obviously challenging. So she, she teaches, Mrs. Hancock teaches seventh and eighth grade, all in the seventh grade for that honors math. So what we, what, what we're going to do is, obviously, we're going to do a year and a half in sixth grade and then a year and a half in, in seventh grade. So that will take some pressure off of that seventh grade honors math class. And you can see underneath that some of the intervention and enrichment ideas that are consistent with what's going on in the, in the elementary as well. So, um, that's basically kind of, you know, my summary of the model. I'll open it up for some, some questions that you guys may have. But before we get to the questions on the model, I also want to talk about our web program, Where Everyone Belongs, which is, so what, what we've done is we've identified thirty-five or so seventh grade leaders this year, student leaders, that we've trained in, in this program, and they're going to serve as mentors, as, when they're eighth graders next year, they're going to serve as mentors for the incoming sixth graders to help ease with that transition. We actually have some activities that we're planning in the springtime, as well as throughout all of next year, that the web leaders are going to engage with, with the incoming sixth grader. So we're going to be going over to JFK and Coolidge and kind of doing some focus groups and doing some, some team building. As well as in the spring, we'll be bringing them all over here for half a day to do a tour of the building and some, you know, working with the middle school teachers and the web leaders. And then there's a whole itinerary of things that they do next year. So that's to just help with that whole transition. So we're excited about that. I know the, the web leaders are excited to, to, to get working along those lines. So having said that, I'd be happy to open up any questions. And I know that, you know, we have Tom and Dina and Blake here, so if I can't answer something, I'm sure, please. Does anyone have any questions about this?
Okay, I have a couple.
Yeah.
I could, I could go on and on, and we could spend the whole meeting on middle school transitions, so for, just in case nobody else wants to do that. Who, who do we have on the board that's participating in this process? Do we have a board member that's?
Nan's on the parent committee.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't have a kid that's going, like, okay, yes, I'm on, yeah, I'm on the committee.
That's what I meant, okay, so you and I can chat maybe a little bit more about some of the nitty-gritty of it. I mean, it's all very interesting. So, but I hope this question doesn't sound too redundant, but I'm wondering, as you came to this sort of working model, what, where, there's so many different factors involved, right? Economic and schedule and parents and teachers and students and everything. Where would you rank student achievement in the role that it plays in the final, final answer?
Well, I mean, number one, I mean, I, I think that was at the top of everybody, and I, and I know that I said that with the teacher committee, is that, you know, I, I know that there are teacher certification issues, there are highly qualified issues, depending on what model we choose. But we were, I thought we were very careful and deliberate about really setting those aside and really trying to choose the model that was best for our kids. And I know that Mr. Pruitt definitely stressed that. And then we brought in the academic data, not only just kind of anecdotally what we felt was best for the students, but then we looked at the data and we saw that, you know, there's a significant population that needs support in reading and math, and so we, so now we need to build that. Is an hour a day really enough? Because if we went with a six-period day, they're only getting an hour of math and an hour of, of, of reading, and we didn't think that was enough. So then how do we build in more time? We looked at a couple variations of that. So that, that's definitely number one on the list.
I certainly get, get that from, from the final product here. And I guess, I just feel like sometimes that can be lost in the shuffle because there's so many other factors.
Right.
And so it's, it's, this, I mean, I'm pleased with this.
Yeah.
I would say it was at the forefront of every meeting, every meeting, not only academic, but sixth grade socially-emotional development. In this model, there's not a model around this county that looks like this. And I mean, we can tell you the other middle schools, this is, their work that they've done is so impressive.
The, all the other middle schools Jason toured and, and pretty much all in this county just have a straight six. Because it's, it's, it's easiest. It is logistically and financially the easiest. You know, the, the directive to Jason that we gave him was figure out what's best for kids, and that's what he did. And so that becomes our, our job, try and implement what we believe is best for kids developmentally in sixth grade.
I just have a comment. And my comment is how pleased I am that the, um, the common planning is a part of this plan because for student success and everything else, for these teachers being able to connect to each other and talk with each other about, you know, like, oh my gosh, Johnny's doing so great in this, but you know, like, I'm having a really hard time. And there's so many ways that they can judge the system if they're having common planning where they get to see each other all the time. And I'm, I'm only guessing that teachers are going to be thrilled to have this common planning, be able to touch base with each other, especially since this is new and this is going to be a whole different model for sixth grade. So it's kind of exciting for the teachers to be able to build something that really is amazing for the kids. Now, I'm just really happy about that.
And I, I want to be clear with the board and the community that we could run a cheaper model from a pure, a pure financial standpoint. What our goal is, is not looking at just financial and cuts, but what's best for kids. And then how do we try and build around that to make sure that we can supply that? So as, as many other districts will do the opposite. We're trying to come at from kids' first perspective, that'll be an important part of, you know, being able to allocate the money towards the kids as best as possible. I will say that, you know, equity was also a big issue, making sure that every kid, I mean, that, that, not only that we're meeting them where they're at, and they're all at different places, but also making sure that they all have access to the same resources. So that was definitely in the forefront of our mind as well.
So you have an odd number of teachers and you were going to have the co-taught subjects, but for the self-contained model, do you have any idea or plans of what would go in that place?
I, I guess I don't understand the question.
So self-contained, you just have one block. But the other ones you said would be co-teachers, so English, Math, English, Math and Science and English and Social Studies.
Right.
There's an even number there, but then there's that one self-contained block, what would go in that place?
Well, I mean, that, that would be a self-contained teacher. So teacher number five has the same group of students and they're teaching them the, all four core subjects. So that's, that's one group of students with the same teacher all day. And unfortunately, with an odd number, no matter, you know, how you do it, the only way to avoid that is to go to a straight six-period day. So that was definitely something that, that we noticed. And from the equity end, that was definitely something that we were cognizant of. But with an odd number, I mean, you know, hopefully, we get six teachers, you know, we have enough students that come in on the first day of school, we can get six teachers and that issue resolves itself. But that, that is, I think, an, an issue with this model, that we were aware of.
I believe, Mr. Gillespie, we, we're doing this at Coolidge at the moment where we have a teacher that's self-contained because we have an odd number.
And yes, we've done that, we, we've been doing that, right? Mr., I know Mr. Sigler had a self-contained class over at Coolidge. So, yeah, there's, there's just, I, you know, it's, it's the math of it.
Does that self-contained teacher then tend to be the strongest across the subjects?
We could look at it like that. You, you know, that could be a Cambridge class. And again, like, those Cambridge, you know, blocks aren't, aren't necessarily set. We're going to have to see what the numbers shake out at. But, um, or that could be our, depending on what special ed, how we deliver special education, that could be the co-taught class to provide some consistency and continuity to those students. In, in, in middle school and secondary, we deliver special education through more of a, a co-teaching model, where the students are pushed into a general classroom with a gen ed teacher plus a special ed teacher, so there are, you know, two certified teachers in there, versus how they do it in the elementary, where it's more of a pull-out program, where the students are mainstreamed into the several different classes and then pulled out for resource room support. So those issues aren't quite settled, we're, we're, we're close. We have to take a look at our numbers and certification as well. But, you know, I could see maybe that being there. So I, I think there are a, a couple of different ways of, of utilizing that, that, that class.
And that'll be part of evaluating the students in terms of moving up, the staffing, what's the best, you know, with, with the staffing. And the nice piece of this is whereas a straight six-hours day is more random selection of where students go, you can be a little more selective of where students go to try and create the best learning environments for the students and the teachers. What, um, well, what certificate, what certifications teachers have to have?
This is an elementary cert.
And then one more question. The band, in terms of the A-B elective rotation, is that band orchestra choir, is that the same music education exposure that kids are getting now in the sixth grade?
The, the math is close, Blake, do you remember?
They actually, if I remember correctly, get more minutes. It's, it's every other day sixty minutes.
Versus?
I meant, I meant band, not math, band orchestra choir.
No, no, the math of the minutes.
The math of the minutes.
Yeah.
It's more minutes and music education this way because of.
They get sixty minutes every other day. Versus?
Because of the length of the class.
Are they doing twenty-five now?
They're doing thirty, maybe thirty now.
So thirty minutes, five days in the week, and this is going to be sixty minutes.
And they also, they also don't have to be pulled out like they do now. We, we met with the fine arts staff to tweak how we're going to do that. And one of the things that we're looking at is the students that aren't in band and orchestra, maybe it's not choir, but a more general music experience. And if we can free up the staff where students can do a choir as one of the enrichment during that intervention enrichment block. So students that are in band and choir, or band and orchestra also have the ability to do choir. And that'll allow for some more smaller groups of intervention. So one of the things we want to make sure is if a band and orchestra student a lot of times will want to do a choir experience too. So how do we make sure we, we do that? So the, the fine arts teachers felt that this, this was a, a good way for them to be able to continue the education at the same level we're giving or better. And we can also, and also be able to do it in a way where you've got two band teachers there so they can divide the kids. I'm going to take, I'm going to do a whole band experience with this teacher, and then this other teacher can take a small ensemble to work with them. Or you're going to do woodwinds, you're going to do brass. So it allows them a lot of flexibility and they can do full ensemble rehearsals, which they can't do now. So it does provide them more flexibility and Eagle, not more instructional minutes. Anything else?
Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, there's just, um, one more thing, I forgot that Mr. Francis, he was, you want to explain how this happened?
So, um, one more thing on the, the board appreciation is, I don't know if he was at Como's today eating lunch, but he got you guys fifty percent off your next meal at Como's.
Thank you, I might share, I'm kidding. Thank you very much. Fair enough, fair enough. Thank you so much, I appreciate all the time and effort that went into the sixth grade planning. I know you still have a lot of work to do, but I can tell a lot went into this. And the importance of the student achievement and the equity piece. I love it when a strategic plan comes together. So this is exciting stuff for our kids and for our parents. Thank you very much, and for the artwork. I know we're going to all love that. Moving on to the Ferndale Student Representatives, is, are UHS representatives, Anisha Smith? Did you come make it today? Okay, then we will move to FHS, Crystal, you have us.
Hi, I'm Crystal.
Hey, Crystal.
And I have a seventy-five percent off at seven eleven, just whatever he was, I can do one better. Hi, I'm Nat Crystal, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what's happening at Ferndale High School. We're in the midst, our, our last day of final exams is tomorrow. And the kids are going to recover over the weekend. No school Friday, it's a records day for the teachers and a kid, a day for the kids to recover as well as the teachers. But it's going very well. So, let's see, we're, I also want to let you know that through Ferndale Youth Assistance and some funding from Jack Aronson, that we are, we currently offer three days of free tutoring from three fifteen to four forty-five for the kids. We're now, through some funding, through him, we're able to offer another day of tutoring specializing in ELA and science, because most of our tutoring is centered around math. So we're now going to bring this ELA and science into the mix as well. So we're proud of that. One oddity, I guess, is maybe not the right word, but I want to let you all know that we currently have three pregnant teachers at the high school. And if, I guess we have four because we have a male teacher whose wife is pregnant, he's going to be taking a leave too as well. So we're in the midst of looking for some long-term subs. We're doing our best to find someone who is going to just like not miss a beat and keep, keep the train moving forward. They happen to be due around the same time, so it's going to be exciting, exciting time at Ferndale High School, right? Let's see, we've, we've instituted the robotics program, or at least they now know what the game is. It's first robotics, right? And so the, the game this year, I, I think it's called Storm the Castle, is anyone here? Stronghold, I call it Storm the Castle, I like it better. And so they are now busy, I, I watched them get all excited about the game. I watched them, the student led with the mentor just kind of standing back and watching how they brainstorm the, the defenses, the offensive, how they're going to accommodate the obstacles that are built into the game. And our kids are tremendous, you know, it's a tribute to the leadership of the mentors and Ms. Matthews. And it, it's a highlight of the year. And they really get the competition in March, so more on that later, but it's an exciting time. Let's see, Dina is kind of taking the lead with Sean Butler on the Profit, the Entrepreneurial Competition. Friday, we're going, if all goes as planned, we are going to be adjudicating, I think, up to thirteen teams, kids who've put together business plans and business models. And then next Tuesday, Marcus, somebody, whatever, okay. I've never seen, I, I saw about thirty seconds of the show and I went, okay, that's enough for me. But I hope he isn't listening. The, but it's a tremendous experience, even if the kids don't, whatever, just going through this process has been a tremendous learning experience for them. We're very proud of these kids who are taking this on.
Mr. Smith, if I can break in for a second, it's building off, actually, with Mr. Jeffries is doing that the board approved last year with the Shark Tank units.
Oh, right.
So it's, it's a, it's a direct build off of that. So, and we have a ton of local businesses that are excited if, if you.
If, if you know Kyle from Big B Coffee, um, his wife is a huge Profit fan and can't wait for this to happen around here. Um, so there's a, a good deal of buzz within the, the business community about this, which is great.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. Kids are excited, no doubt about it. Um, All City Band Orchestra and Choir Concerts is, is Saturday, January thirtieth. And just for information, choir goes up at eleven, band is at one, and orchestra is at four. And as the old band orchestra choir guy here in my former life, it is a highlight of the year, because you get to hear these fifth graders squeaking and squawking, and within a half hour you can hear what they're gonna sound like in five, six years later down the road. It's very, I find it a very emotional concert. Uh, you can just see the pride in all these kids as they watch the older kids and get modeling for them. It's a very exciting day, so I would encourage you all to come see some of that. Um, on a high school level, we are taking on Challenge Day, which is a communications retreat, if you will, held right here in the building. Uh, we knocked around a few different ideas, and what I've settled on is to make the, hopefully I can make this part of the junior class experience. Every year the juniors will roll through, and we're gonna hold Challenge Day for them. And we bring in, it's a nationwide company that's been doing it all over the country for a vast number of years. Many of you, I think, have probably gone through this. Uh, we, we have a hundred juniors this year, we'll have twenty-five adult liaisons in, in their, in that gym with us, as well as the four or five staff members from Challenge Day. It's an exciting day, and next year I'm hoping to be able to do two days of it, so I can get the entire class covered. That's Wednesday, February third. It's an all-day event from seven thirty to three thirty. Still looking for a few adult volunteers, if you wanna, amen. Earlier tonight, you used the word zhuzh or something, what?
I did.
How do you spell that? I don't know either. I, I didn't know what that meant, but it's kinda cool. Um, let's see, S A T review. We have another S A T camp coming up, February sixth, it's a Saturday. We get quite a few teachers who volunteer their time to come in, and we're working on some English and math as we prepare these kids for the inaugural version of the S A T.